Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Township of South Orange Village Planning Board for Monday, January 5th, 2015. Jetta, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Colton Maxx.
Here.
Mr. Lerner.
Here.
Mr. Rosner.
Yeah.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Ms. Cullen.
Here.
Reverend Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Chambers.
Here.
Mr. Lerman.
Here.
And Ms. Harris.
Here.
Pursuant to Section 5, Chapter 231, PL 1975, this is to state for the record that adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the public by posting and maintaining the annual notice of regular meetings on the bulletin board in Village Hall, by mailing the annual notice of regular meetings for 2015 to the South Orange Maplewood News Record, and the Star Ledger in December 2014, and by filing said notice in the office of the village clerk. Does everyone have a copy of the agenda, or anyone who wants one have a copy of the agenda? Okay, great. So let's get started. We have some catching up to do as it relates to the approval of minutes. We have minutes from five separate meetings, which we're going to be voting on this evening. Jetta will indicate, as we go to each one, which members are eligible to vote. It's just that those who are not at those meetings may wish to abstain not having been there at that meeting. So, let's start with the regular meeting held Monday, August 4th, 2014. Can you just remind us who was there? And as we go through each of those, if anybody has any particular questions or comments as to the draft minutes which were sent out prior to the meeting, please let us know. Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion and a second.
Okay, for the 4th, Mr. Lerner, Mr. Chambers, Reverend Wilson, Ms. Harris, Mr. Miller, and Mr. Colton Maxx.
Okay. Any comments or suggested revisions to the August 4th minutes? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move August 4th.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Abstentions, or those who vote no?
Abstention.
Abstention.
Okay. So we have three abstentions. Now for the special meeting held on Monday, August 18th, 2014. Any suggested revisions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. Don't everybody jump at once.
I'll move.
I'm sorry, actually, you're absolutely right. I apologize.
Mr. Lerner, Ms. Harris, Mr. Lerman, Mr. Miller, and Mr. Colton Maxx.
So now I'll entertain a motion.
Again, I will move.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Okay, thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstention.
Okay. Jetta, did you get that?
Yep.
Okay. All right, moving on to September 3rd, 2014. Can you please indicate who's eligible to vote, or who was present at the meeting?
Mr. Lerner, Mr. Lerman, Reverend Wilson, Ms. Cullen, Mr. Miller, and Mr. Colton Maxx.
Okay.
I'll move.
Second.
Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstention.
Monday, October 6th, 2014. Jetta, can you indicate who was present at the meeting, please?
Mr. Lerner, Mr. Chambers, Mr. Lerman, Reverend Wilson, Ms. Harris, Mr. Rosner, Mr. Miller, and Mr. Colton Maxx.
Okay. Any suggested, proposed revisions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move.
Okay. We have a motion, and we have a second from Mr. Rosner. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And all those opposed? Abstentions?
Abstain.
And finally, the regular meeting held Monday, November 3rd, 2014. Jetta?
Mr. Lerner, Mr. Chambers, Mr. Lerman, Ms. Harris, Mr. Rosner, Mr. Miller, and Mr. Colton Maxx.
Okay. Are there any suggested or proposed revisions? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move.
Okay.
Second.
And second. Okay, very good. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions?
Abstention.
Okay. Okay. Thank you all very much for going through that process. And now we move on to the, as it is the beginning of the year, we have our reorganization portion of the meeting. This involves the election of officers, as well as appointment of professionals. And we normally start with the election of officers, but take nominations for those positions.
Nominate Harold Colton Maxx.
Second.
Harold, I don't get a chance to say no, do I? Just kidding.
Harold, would you mind not chairing this portion of the meeting?
I would not mind.
How would you like me to go to the, how would you like to handle it specifically?
Who's the vice?
I am.
Michael.
Michael is the vice chairman.
Michael, can you chair this portion, please?
Sure. I will take nominations for chairman.
I'd nominate Harold Colton Maxx to be chairman.
Second.
Do we need a roll call on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Any nays? Congratulations.
You took two steps back, and you're here.
Congratulations.
Thank you, I'm blushing. I know. Get back to the phone. Thank you, Mike. And now, we have the election for the vice chairman. Do I hear any nominations?
Nominate Michael Miller.
Second.
Okay. Okay. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, all in favor of appointing Michael Miller as vice chairman by acclamation? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Abstentions?
I only have a three-page speech.
Oh, well.
Nate.
I tell you what, right after the speech.
Maybe.
We've heard it before. We have four professional positions that we'll be appointing, starting with the planner. The planner position has been filled for several years by the firm of Higher Grule. And Susan is here this evening with us. Certainly, we could consider that firm, or any others that wish to be brought up by members of the board.
Nominate Higher Grule. Second.
Okay. Are there any other nominations, any other firm to be appointed? Okay, so all those in favor of appointing Higher Grule for a one-year term for the year 2015, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstentions? Susan, we look forward to working with you for yet another year. We didn't give you a chance to say no, by the way. I just noticed that.
Thank you, and I look forward, we look forward to working with you, too. I only have a two-page speech.
Oh, okay. You can go right after Michael's. Next is our attorney. We've been represented for a number of years, in my estimation most aptly, by Patrick Dwyer and his firm. And so I'll, you know, we can hear nominations, whether for Mr. Dwyer and his firm, or for other firms, if others.
I would like to nominate Mr. Dwyer and his firm.
Okay.
Second.
Okay.
Which the firm name is what?
It's now Nussbaum Stein.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? Okay. Therefore, all those in favor of, do it again, Nussbaum?
Stein.
Nussbaum Stein. All those in favor of reappointing Nussbaum Stein and Patrick Dwyer from that firm, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Okay, great. Patrick?
Thank you.
Thank you for all your hard work.
I have no speech prepared.
Okay, all right. You'll have one for next.
Next one. Next one.
The consultant engineer. Now, just by point of clarification, that's obviously not the employee from the village, right? We're not talking about Sal. We're talking about Omland, the position that has been filled since you were on. Do we know if they are interested in continuing to serve in this capacity?
I believe they are.
Okay.
I don't know for sure, but, I mean, you can always reappoint them if they want to withdraw.
Okay.
Or reappoint someone else.
I'm sorry.
Or appoint someone else if they wanted to withdraw.
Okay. All right, so then, do I hear any nominations, whether of Omland Engineering or any other firm?
Well, just a question before nomination. Do they have to be here to be nominated? They have to be here to be sworn in.
No, they wouldn't have to be here to be nominated, right?
Right, but if they're sworn in, they'd have to be here.
And also, as you know, Mr. Chair, they have merged. They've merged now with, they're part of Bowman, B-O-W-M-A-N.
If this is not done at this meeting, is there any reason why it can't be done at the next meeting?
The only concern would be if they're not appointed at this meeting and an application comes in between now and the next meeting, I don't know if we would have the ability to forward that application to them to represent the town. Patrick, would that be a problem? It would be a major application, otherwise it would be handled now, is correct. Correct. Is there anything coming down the pipeline, Jetta?
Not that I know of right now.
But something could come in tomorrow.
Could.
Well, we could appoint them, couldn't we appoint them provisionally, I mean, pending their acceptance?
Sure.
And then they can be sworn in at the next meeting that they attend.
Yeah.
Unless Sal has another recommendation for a different engineer.
Okay. Well, I'll certainly entertain, you know, we can entertain a motion for any firm, whether Omland Engineering or others, so.
Well, I'll move Omland Engineering, subject to their acceptance, obviously.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other nominations? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of reappointing Omland Engineering as our consultant engineer, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Abstentions? Okay. So, Sal, will you reach out to them, then?
Sure.
To do that? Okay, thank you. And finally, for the position of board secretary, Jetta has been our board secretary, has done a great job, as you can see through all the minutes that they had to vote on this evening. So certainly, though, it's open to other nominations. I will open it up for nominations now, for board secretary.
I nominate Jetta.
Okay.
I'll second.
Everybody was jumping.
Yeah.
That's a good sign.
I wrote a speech, but I left it, so I just said that.
Do I hear any other nominations? Okay, hearing none. If we can vote, all those in favor of reappointing Jetta as our, Jetta Davis, excuse me, as our board secretary, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstentions? Okay, Jetta, welcome back for another year. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So now, we have the swearing in for the planner, Susan, since you're here. Patrick, if I could?
Sure. Susan, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the factual testimony you'll give to this board during the year 2015 shall be the whole truth?
I do.
Okay, very good, and we'll wait till the next meeting here, Representative Omland Engineering is here in, I'm sorry?
We should do Sal.
You need to do, oh, engineer, not consultant engineer.
Okay.
Fair enough. Sorry.
Sal, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that factual testimony you'll give to this board during the year 2015 shall be the whole truth? Yes, I do.
Interesting. Why not, why not the consultant engineer?
Them, too, they're just not here.
Oh, they're just not on the list. Okay. All right, very good. So the reorganization portion of our meeting.
Do you need to do the attorney?
I'm sorry?
Does the attorney need to be done?
No, I'm not allowed to give testimony.
Oh, okay.
About the secretary?
Gotcha.
Does the secretary have to be, or what about the secretary?
You just assumed we always speak the traffic.
Sounds like a lawyer joke is behind that.
What, does the secretary?
Traffic, engineering, transportation. It's only for a couple of larger projects.
So the reorganization portion of the meeting is now complete. We'll now move on to application to be heard, case number 231, Luther P. Turner, Jr., and Hazel A. Turner, Lot 704, Lot 1, 14 King Road, minor subdivision. Applicant is proposing to subdivide the existing lot to create two lots with the intent to construct a one-family dwelling on the new lot. This has been on our agenda and pending for a while. We thought we might get it for tonight's meeting, but it appears that is not the case. Patrick, could you provide us with an update, please?
I did receive an email from applicant's attorney approximately two weeks ago, asking for waivers of some sort, and I said if she had to ask for waivers, submission waivers, she could make that request to the board, and the board can grant them or not. I should probably know, that's pretty standard procedure for applicants to ask for certain submission waivers. And that was it. I haven't heard back from her since then. Jetta?
No, I haven't heard anything.
So, that's the latest I've heard.
Okay. Is there any requirement at this point that they would need to notice, or perhaps renotice, any of the neighbors in proceeding with this case?
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, since of the delay, there may be people who were, who thought that after what's happened before in this matter in the HPC, that the subdivision application would not proceed, and they should be notified, especially the neighbors.
Okay. So, can you communicate, I mean, let me just ask, is that something the board wishes that we should?
I would think so.
Ask them to do that? Yeah, okay. So can, can you, well, who would properly communicate that? You or the attorney?
I will. Chairman.
Okay. All right. So how far before the meeting should they have done? And is this both the mailing, as well as noticing in the paper?
Correct.
Okay. So, and so it'll be just the standard notifications?
Correct, 10 days.
Okay.
And who receives that, in terms of the property owners? Is it 250 feet, 500 feet? What is the notice?
200 feet.
200 feet.
Yeah. And there's also a list that the town has of what utilities have to be noticed for every application. And anyone else who's asked the town to be noticed on every application can also get notice.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, so, moving on, we're on to discussions now. Report from the Board of Trustees members regarding the Planning and Zoning Committee. Mark?
Yep. Two things. One is, the HPC, the Historical Committee, has put together a draft of an element for the master plan, which the Board of Trustees will be considering adding to the master plan, and they'll then go to the planning board for review and input, and then back to us, subject to any changes that are made by anybody. We're also, Orange Lawn is asking us to consider an ordinance to change the zoning on their property, which we should be voting on in one of the next two meetings this month, but because of the timing, we would actually have to have it on discussion at the next planning board meeting, and that's to allow them to change the zoning. Right now, it's all or nothing on townhomes.
Can you hold on one moment? There's a, any discussion of Orange Law? Patrick needs to accuse himself.
I forgot. So, Orange Lawn is considering selling a portion of their property to develop, and right now, the property calls for the whole property to be zoned for townhouses, or as a tennis club, and they want to switch it, so one-third of it could be done for townhomes, and the other two-thirds remain clubs. The board will be considering that. That ordinance will come due to the 45-day period. We'll be doing it at that meeting, so that will be on for discussion, hopefully, at the next meeting of the planning board.
Okay. Is there any?
And I think, I think Ms. Grule's going to give us an update on the Irvington Avenue tonight?
That's, that's next, but I, before we get to that, I, I know I had a question, but please go ahead, Mike.
The trustees are going to be considering an ordinance on first reading?
Yes.
For the rezone? I assume if it passes, and the trustees are indicating that they are for the rezone?
Yes.
Okay.
And then I'll come to the planning board, I believe, for a 45-day comment period.
And then after, if it does pass, they still have to bring their plans to the planning board.
Understand.
It's not a, you know, it doesn't, there's a process.
Understand.
That has, that has to be followed.
But ostensibly, somebody could vote in favor of going to second reading in order to, in order to vote against it.
Yes, exactly. That's happened many times, and, and people could vote, you know, and people who might be on both boards might vote in favor of changing the ordinance and vote against the proposed plans.
Right. I have a different question, though. You talked about the HPC bringing something to the Board of Trustees for the, for the master plan, which brings me to the question of, was my understanding that there was a plan to actually redo the master plan in its entirety? Can you talk about how that might fit in with that, or at least what the timing is, if you happen to know it? What was that?
I said I could, but I'm not going to.
Oh, okay.
We're actually, we actually have held off on doing the whole master plan for a few months, mostly because of, there's a lot of stuff on our plate, and there's a lot to go into it, and so we've actually sort of delayed that a bit, and, and that's really the reason for, for considering this this way. We, we did notify them that even if this version of the HPC master element changes, that there's a good chance that it will be tweaked again when we do the full master plan by whoever is chosen to work on whatever planning firm.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't want to have the HPC, or anybody else, spinning their wheels in order to.
No, we, we made this very clear to them over and over, so they, they're in full understanding of it.
Okay.
And we will make sure that everybody on the planning board gets a copy of what they proposed.
Okay.
If the board, if the Board of Trustees agrees to do that.
Is that, would we get a copy prior to the Board of Trustees approving it? I mean, because I understand the approval of the RFP literally falls under the jurisdiction of the planning board, or?
That's, that's for the, for the whole plan, you mean, for the master plan?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, that would, that would definitely come to you first when we get to that. We've got a few months for that, though.
Yeah, and we probably need to apologize to those who participated. I think it's one of those things where you're trying to, you're trying to, we're doing a lot of planning in the village, which is probably a really good thing, and I think we're anxious, and we want to get a lot of stuff done, but if you look at the totality of how many things planning-related we have going on right now, between the rehabilitation designation, needing to create a redevelopment plan for those rehabilitation zones, the fact that we still have ongoing redevelopment studies that are happening, we have a code review that we're doing with a working group right now, looking at land use issues, codes that are within our master plan, the overall goals, the objectives, and then we're also talking about the Mary Lawn site and rezoning there. So there's, you know, it's normally the master plan that always ends up getting kicked, because it's kind of the, the big, you know, grand pooh-bah of all things that we're trying to accomplish, but right now, we probably need to complete some of these open-ended items first before taking on an aggressive planning and public-intensive process. And based on the comments that we received from the planning board and the RFP that was proposed, and it looked fantastic, it was very extensive and intensive, and before committing to that, both with resources from the trustees, from the planning board members, who have a lot going on in the upcoming months, and also our professionals on staff, we thought it'd be best, pull back for a little bit right now, complete some of these items before we move forward with the master planning process.
Just, just another question on the master. Who else is going to have input into that? For argument's sake, is the zoning board of adjustment going to look at that, at the proposed RFP?
Yes, they have.
And add input?
No, not the RFP, a part of the process.
No, the actual master plan. And when we actually do, when we actually get to the point of redoing the master plan, someone from the board of adjustment, I think they had two people who volunteered to participate in the process.
Well, let me just follow up on that.
The RFP is basically dumb. We just haven't put it out there yet.
Yeah.
Okay, as I understand, the RFP, it's on Barry's desk.
Yes.
Yes.
And it's staying there for a few months. That's what we're saying.
Okay, so it's going to sit there for a few months?
Yes, intentionally, because, and a lot of it has to do, and also, we have to see where we go with Irvington Avenue, which is, you know, because a lot of the changes and the zoning changes are going to be, are going to be reflected in that area, because right now, it's a mishmash of zones. So we didn't want to, you couldn't do one without doing the other, so we have to finish up what we're doing on Irvington Avenue with the study and the code review, and seeing what kind of businesses, if we want to make, you know, so there's, there was a lot going into it, so it didn't make sense to do it right now. And that's been the problem always, is the master plan keeps getting pushed off, but hopefully, it's only a few months.
Did you have a question?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So just, so I'm clear, so you're not saying, so you're saying a few months, but so we're not going back through the process of doing the RFP?
That RFP is staying the same. We have the RFP ready to go, it's clean, it's ready to go, and we're just holding off on it until the timing works better for the staff.
To, to get all this other stuff taken care of?
Yeah, anything you put in there, we took out, and everything else is not.
Mark, with the RFP ready to go, or close to ready to go, does that incorporate some of the comments of the Sar?
Yes, it incorporated most of the comments that.
Well, if it's not going to go out for a few months, can at least the committee, the master plan committee, get a copy of what the kind of semi-finished RFP looks like?
Yeah, it hasn't been touched, from, from the one that was voted on here and sent to the Board of Trustees.
Oh, it hasn't been touched?
It hasn't been touched.
I thought there was one minor change, but basically.
The minor change was basically, I guess it's kind of a major change, is using the term required, rather than saying will be taken into consideration, because when you make requirements, especially when you're looking at job creation, et cetera, we didn't want to create a study on top of another study on top of a master plan, so a lot of the things that were added from the planning board, all very good things that we would like considered, shouldn't be mandatory of the planning firm, but rather a consideration in determining which firm to move forward with. So that type of language changed, but the substance of everything else remains the same.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have a question related to Mary Lawn, not to the master plan. Just for, this item is coming to us for public comment. What has been the process to notify the public?
We've had two meetings with stakeholders, and those meetings were both publicly noticed. We're gonna be having another one on January 16th at 8:00 a.m., and, you know, it's, it's open to the public, but we're not taking any official action at those meetings. Those are more a discussion group as part of the Planning and Zoning Committee. Any official action can only be taken at a Board of Trustee meeting, where it'll be fully discussed and vetted there, and then it would have to go through two votes and come to the planning board, just like any other ordinance.
I just want to make sure, like with the Irvington redevelopment study, not a lot of people were notified, and they were pretty surprised, so I just want to make sure that the public is notified and it's brought in.
Well, we notified, we notified the Montrose Park Historic District Association and the West Montrose Association, and, and it was noticed in the paper. I'm not, you know, I don't know, you know, how else we really can do it.
Well, everyone receives a copy of the Gaslight, so that might be a place to put it in.
The Gaslight only comes out six times a year, you know, I don't time. These meetings are more fluid than that, so it's kind of hard to do it in the Gaslight.
Online, on the Village website?
Excuse me?
On the Village website landing page? Maybe that's a possibility, since people visit that page often?
The Village website is definitely a way, but I actually thought that by putting it into the two neighborhood associations who send it to their membership list, we actually thought we'd get it to the biggest, but we did put it...
If you're not on Nextdoor, you're not connected with the Neighborhood Association.
It's on the website, on the Village calendar. It shows up on the calendar, you know, as a special meeting on whatever day it's been.
Okay.
It shows up there, and we actually also notified the press at the, when we had the second meeting, because the first one was just to, you know, just to discuss if we were gonna do anything. You know, it's kind of hard. It's one of, it's something that's always been hard to do, is to get any kind of meeting, whether it's this meeting or any meeting, is to get a notice out to everyone in a way that the people are gonna look at, because putting it in the news record doesn't really, you know, that only might attract 50 people, might see it, and another 50 people might see it on the website. And the Neighborhood Association news email blast has proven to be the most effective in the past. I just, I should, I guess I should notify the planning board members, too, but we've also felt that, I don't know how we left it on that, but, you know, if you're gonna, if it's gonna come to a vote before one of these boards, we'd rather you not participate in those conversations at the meetings.
Right, it's not, it's not for me. It's just for the, especially with the backlash with the redevelopment study, so just for consideration, you may want to put it on the Village's website.
I'll make sure that Adam puts it on the website.
What I think, just to add on to that, what I think is a little difficult is there's the statutory process of the notifications, but that I think both the planning board and the Board of Trustees, we like to go above and beyond that, but prior to the actual notice that you go through formally, it's like, how are you gonna capture the most people at once? So, watching the meetings when Irvington Avenue came up, we, within the committee, were already planning two public forms, which we had. We were planning packets to be mailed to everybody within the jurisdiction, but at the time where it came here just to authorize the first step, which was the study, the questions already began, like, why weren't we noticed yet? Where we foresaw this being a very long process from start to finish, and we just hadn't gotten to that point. So, we did as much as we could in advance, and once Susan makes a presentation to the board, recommendations, and it's deliberated here, then you go through another round of formal notices. But as far as we're concerned, for Irvington Avenue, everybody with an interest with what happens on that corridor, whether they live there or they're in Newstead, we tried to make it as available, you know, to, to people who were interested, and it's something that I think we're challenged at for the most part, and, you know, I just don't know which mechanism that's frequent that gets to the most people, because the worst thing to hear when you're sitting in one of these chairs is we didn't even know this was going on, and we're so close to it, we're involved with every, it's like, how do you not know? It's like, we live this. We, we dream about it at night. So, if you have suggestions on, you know, how we can get it out more frequently, the Gaslight, as Mark said, it's so infrequent, even though it's the thing that hits the most households.
Right.
And not everybody's reading the tiny print in the news record as to what's coming up.
Well, I think the Village website is a start, but I appreciate the feedback.
Mark, has Mary Lawn put their litigation in abeyance pending this?
Put litigation.
Didn't Mary Lawn file?
We sort of, it's, it's, it's not something we're discussing at these meetings. I mean, we know it's there, and we know what it's about, but it's not really, we still have to make a decision of what we want to, you know, do with that, with that particular parcel.
Fine.
And I don't know if the planning board discussed it, or if you were noticed about it. You probably read about it, hopefully, is that Mary Lawn, our tax assessor, is putting it back on the tax rolls?
Yeah, I saw that both on your website and in the paper.
Yeah, it was discussed at a board meeting after first discussing it in closed session, but it actually came out at the Mary Lawn Working Group, was this question about when you're a tax-exempt entity, what allows you to keep that status if you're no longer operating? And once we had received some additional information from the attorney, and he shared that with our assessor, the determination was made that it no longer met the exemptions of what's required under state statute to not be paying taxes on the property, and so the rest is in the paper.
And by the way, the, the tax assessor makes that determination, not the Board of Trustees, and obviously, Mary Lawn or the Sisters Charity, which owned the property, can challenge that decision. And so, it's not, you know, from that perspective, it's not a done deal.
But is, but the, the lawsuit, though, which named the planning board among other institutions, that lawsuit, as I understood it, was, well, it was in abeyance while the Seton Hall application was being considered by the Board of Adjustment, but since that's been withdrawn, and apparently, Seton Hall has indicated that they do not intend to reapply.
Right. The lawsuit's back on the table.
So, have we been, I mean, I, and Patrick, have we, as the planning board, been noticed in any way about this, and is there anything we should be doing, or can you tell us at least where we are in the process?
Yeah, there was a deadline initially, and when they first filed suit to allow Seton Hall to make their application to temporarily dismiss the suit by Mary Lawn, which it was dismissed temporarily, as the timeframe came to a close in November of 2014, and it looked as though Seton Hall's application at the zoning board would not have approval in time, certainly, the lawsuit was reinstituted, and it's just a very preliminary pleading stage, nothing else has happened yet. That's where it is.
Okay. So, there's no, there are no court dates coming up? There is no filings that need to be made? There's nothing that we need to do?
Right.
And you would be our legal counsel still in this matter?
Right.
We're not the higher special counsel or anything like that? Okay. All right. Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Mark and Sheena, for the report. And Sheena, as you brought up, the Irvington Avenue redevelopment study, we did receive a brief memo from Susan. If you'd like to just summarize and just let us know where we are at this point, where we can expect to go from here.
We're still, and the administration is still gathering additional information, and until that information is gathered, we can't complete the study because our opinion is based upon all of the information. So, we have all of the existing data, that's all done and put together, but we can't come to the conclusions until all of that information has been gathered.
And what are we waiting for? Or what are you waiting for at this point?
There are certain, there are certain inspections that, that will, that are continuing to have to occur for certain properties, and those are ongoing. And I am in regular touch with the, with the administrator to, to make sure that that gets out there.
Okay.
So, that's where we are. It's a catch-22. Can't finish it until we have that information, until we have everything that we, and the administration has deemed is everything that we need or that we can get, and then we make that, that opinion.
Have you been given any sense of when you might receive all of the information that you require?
Right before the holidays. I believe that the, that the code person was going to go out right after the holidays, so it should be, hopefully, at any point in time now.
And once you receive that information, what do you expect is the time frame going forward for the completion of your report, or reports? Excuse me, there are multiple reports.
Depending on what the information is, but I would say within two weeks. It's done.
So, it's possible that the report, the draft reports or reports could be ready before the February meeting?
Yes. However, however, in terms of timing, because there are notice requirements...
Right.
Obviously, there couldn't be a public hearing, per se.
What, and, and can one of you, either you or Patrick, remind us of what the notice requirements are relating to these redevelopment studies?
Go ahead, Susan.
It's, it's different than a normal application where it's a 200-foot radius. In this instance, it's all interested, it's all the property owners and anyone else who may have some interest in the property. They are noticed, and they are given direct notice, as well as there's public notice that is given twice, the last of which has to be at least a week before the, the actual hearing. And the hearing occurs at this board, and you take into account really what you hear from the public, your own knowledge and the, and the study, and then you make your recommendations, whatever it may be, and those recommendations are then forwarded to the Board of Trustees, who ultimately determine whether they want to designate the area as an area in need of redevelopment or any portion of. They take the recommendation of this board into account in their, in their assessment, certainly. The, they don't hold the pub, they don't technically have to hold a public hearing. It has to occur at a public meeting, but it, there is no public hearing, per se. It's not like an ordinance, it's a resolution.
Right. You said the minimum amount of time between the final notice and the meeting is a week, but if I were going back, if I were to say, what's the, the first notice has to occur, how far before the, do you know?
It's a week before. You're, you're really talking about somewhere between, by the time you notice and everything else, it's between three and four weeks.
Okay. So, it seems more likely that if you were to get the information in a timely fashion this month, that it's possible, although not definite, that the March meeting would be, certainly not February, but the March meeting is a possibility?
Yes.
Certainly. Okay. Okay. And, and just by, again, by point of clarification, it's studies, because there are, how many different areas?
Right. There are, there are nine, eight different areas.
Okay.
So, yes, you're correct.
All right. Any, anything, Sheena, did you want to add anything about, anything that Susan mentioned about noticing or anything else?
Sure. Just to recap, so there's a couple updates from our actual Irvington Avenue Corridor Advisory Committee, which is now, hopefully you've read about it, is now rebranded, the Seton Village area of town. They've been really energized by a lot of things happening over there. The rebranding has occurred. They're doing a really good job building consensus with the neighborhood, working with the business owners, so hopefully, you're following some of the progress that committee is making, and they've, they've done a great job. We also received, both Mark and myself, our liaisons to the Development Committee, and we have been told that two of our local residents, who are also local developers, have acquired, are under contract for two parcels on Irvington Avenue, even without any of the designations that exist right now, and they are attending our Development Committee meeting on Thursday night to talk about conceptually some of the ideas that they have for the corridor. I think it's great seeing local residents who are in this field want to invest and make a commitment to the local community. One of the partners actually lives in the neighborhood of Seton Village, so that should be pretty exciting. Obviously, any proposals will ultimately likely come to the planning board, but for the time being, they want to go speak to some of the professionals and volunteers on the Development Committee.
Okay. Thank you. Sheena, any other questions, comments, thoughts as it relates to the Irvington Avenue redevelopment studies? Okay. Hearing none. I think this takes us through the agenda. Any other items anybody else wishes to bring up? Well, I want to thank you all for coming out on a...
You got public comment.
What was that?
Public.
I'm sorry. Is there anybody from the public wishing to make comment on any issue with the planning board?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Please come up and identify yourself by name and address, and...
Good evening. My name is Alyssa Aaronson, I'm a longtime resident of this township. My first question is that, is on, it's about Irvington Avenue. Will the study be public? When will the study be public?
Okay.
And, and can I also get a copy of the notice for Irvington Avenue?
Okay. So, Sue, I think Susan just spoke to the question of when the studies will become public.
Yeah.
They have not yet been completed. They're still collecting information. The planners still collecting information. When they've gotten the information, will take them maybe, you know, some amount of time, two, maybe more weeks, and then after that, there will be notice given, and the studies, I imagine, will be publicly available at the Village's offices. I don't know if there's any other method by which they'll be distributed?
Yeah, what, what, that's my next question. What method will be so that the residents on Irvington Avenue can see it?
Well, aside from being made available at the Village offices, are there any other plans to make this?
It'll be on the website.
I'm sorry?
It'll be put on the Village website.
There you go. They'll be put on the Village's website.
And we'll probably put copies at the library. I'll be down there fast.
Okay. And the second is, can you tell me when the Irvington Avenue is gonna meet? Talk, excuse me, trustee Collins, you talk about Irvington Avenue. Are they having a meeting this Thursday? Because you said the board is gonna have two developers come.
That is the Development Committee. That's separate from the Irvington Avenue Corridor Advisory Committee. The, well, it's gonna be renamed, the Seton Village Advisory Committee always meets the third Wednesday in the month.
Okay.
So...
That's when the two developers are coming?
No. The two developers are coming to the Development Committee this Thursday, which is 7:30.
Well, how come it's not on the calendar?
We'd have to ask the Village Corps.
I haven't seen, I haven't seen the Village calendar.